...a pledge to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The secretary of performance roll call attendance, please.
Mr. Fras?
Here. Here.
Mr. Bruno?
Here.
Mr. Barantico?
Here.
Mr. Vaughn?
Here.
Mr. Chris?
Here.
Mr. Floriosi?
Here.
Mr. Meagan?
Here.
Mr. Vaughn?
Here. Okay, hold board members should have received the minutes from the May 6 meeting.
Make a motion, accept.
I'll second.
Okay, motions made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, seen on motion carries. Okay. First item on the agenda is a discussion regarding Hyman Caretaker's Cottage Site Plan and Special Use Permit.
Hi, good evening, Board. Sarah Ryan, Van Water, the Van Water for Ms. Hyman.
Good evening. You've received the memo, the resolution from the planner?
I did.
Okay.
One thing I did want to bring up is I did have follow-up with the engineer about shifting the lot line. There is a practical issue with where the new septic will be located, so I just request that the board, because there's no actual subdivision proposed at this time, make it a condition of their approval that any property owner who wishes to do that subdivision either obtain the necessary variance or relocate the shed or remove.
Okay. Did you capture?
Yeah.
Any of that in this resolution?
Do you want it to be a condition in the resolution? Can it be a note on the plans?
We can make that a note.
How would the board like to have this reflected on the plans and in the resolution, just in the resolution?
Do you want the condition to be in the resolution for the, apparently they're gonna need a variance to subdivide the property to move the lot line?
Or just removal of the shed?
Or a relocation.
Or what?
Or remove the shed.
Remove the shed. Oh, okay.
Huh?
What do you think?
It's always easier to remove it. I mean, that's a, but then, you know, it depends upon who owns the property at the time, if they want to do that or not. I mean, I don't know how substantial the shed we're talking about.
So, the issue is that the garage currently sits within the side yard setback of the hypothetical subdivision lot line. What's being proposed would be a condition in the resolution that should that subdivision ever be pursued, that either a variance would be required for setback of the shed or the shed would need to be removed. Which I think would just be true whether or not we put in a condition.
What size the shed was, how big did we determine?
It's above the 100.
It's above the?
I think it's about 12 by 20 or something like that, 12 by 15.
Oh, that's a garage.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, maybe it might as well, more or less, it's something you're not gonna want to just tear down.
Yeah.
It's not your, you know, it's not your, you know, 10 by 10 storage shed.
So that it would either be?
So variance, they would have to get a?
The lot line or?
If they were to, if they were to subdivide, according to what's been proposed, they would need to get a variance.
How old is the shed? How long is the shed, do you know?
Well, it's a garage.
It's a garage.
It's a garage, yeah.
So, it's not a humongous variance either.
Yeah.
Why don't we just put it in the resolution?
Yeah.
That, you know, they would either attain or?
Yeah.
Move law, you know?
Satisfy that. Satisfy.
Well, it could go either way, just to put in there that they'd need to either obtain a variance for the setback to meet the setback requirement, or they can remove the garage.
I'll, I'll remove the condition and put it as in the whereas that a variance would be required should the viability plan be pursued in the future subdivision.
There you go.
Thank you.
All right. So you say you gotta add that above in one of the whereas sections?
Yeah.
Okay. I believe there was one other thing we needed to discuss was the square footages?
Uh, yeah, so a, a condition has been added to the plans that the mislabeled proposed square footage of the caretaker's cottage will be corrected.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's labeled as 800 feet, it's proposed to be 900 and?
31.
Um?
31?
931.
Okay.
All right. Other than that, there's no other questions really in the resolution?
And for the town dumpster, it's going to be removed from the property?
Yes, my, the client has indicated that she will be doing that, yes.
Okay. Just those three conditions?
Yeah.
The dumpster, you're gonna add that in, you said? Malcolm, in the, you're gonna add to remove the commercial dumpster from the site?
I can add that as a condition, I was under the impression that that was being pursued separately between the building department and the applicant. I think it's a viol, an outstanding violation that will need to be corrected before a permit can be issued. But I can add it as a condition in the resolution.
Add it as letter I?
I, I would let it ride, but we can add it as a condition if you'd like to.
The town would prefer not to see dumpster there at any point, so?
Yeah, just, I, I would suggest we just add it to the resolution, that way it's?
Yeah.
Cut and dry.
I agree. All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution as amended.
I'll make that.
Second, then.
Okay, motions made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? See none, motion carries. Okay, all right, you're welcome. All right, our next item on the agenda is HEO and Silva Lot Line Realignment?
Good evening, my name's Dominic Gonzata, I'm the attorney for Janine Panico. We're just, I'm here to request that the proposed alignment map be approved.
Okay. You have received the letters from both the planner and the engineer?
Yes.
All right. We did have a little discussion regarding this prior to the, prior to the meeting in our workshop. There was the, the issue with the well.
Well, the engineer had issued the original letter saying he would prefer that the, everything be on, the well be on the same property it belongs to, but since then, we have emailed correspondence with him where he didn't realize there was already an easement, and he doesn't have a problem because he realizes now there is an easement, we're just extending it slightly. The other thing I'd just like to point out is, on the flat map, you know, it's not 100% clear why we are asking to put the line where it is. I do, and it would be reasonable for somebody just looking at that to have some questions, but we have a photograph here which shows the top topography also, and the bottom line is, if, okay, I'll pass this around in a minute, would you be okay? Is the neighbor is actually much lower than we are, so practically, the, where the well is and where the new line is, is before where things drop off geographically, so my client is really mowing and maintaining that area where we're moving the line to anyway, and it's not practical for her neighbor to be pushing a lawnmower up there and doing that, so this line really reflects the geography which, which, which is shown here, I can start passing around to wherever you like, which you can't see in the map itself. Okay, can I get this too, sorry?
Go ahead.
And if you can pass that around, you would, you know, you would see the drop-off, and we're just trying to basically reflect what she is practically utilizing as a property, because that's what she's maintaining. And also, the way the line is drawn on the map now additionally makes it, you know, a smooth line without, you know, it's zigzagging back and forth, which would just be kind of awkward.
So the, the two houses are separated by footages, and the well is on the left side on my property on the pine trees, so even if he had a service, he'd have to come up my driveway, anything on my property.
If he needed a vehicle. He don't necessarily need a vehicle, but if he needed a vehicle, there's no vehicle access from his regardless.
Then that really should be all incorporated into easement. They're, what they're, they're basically arguing that they can't get a truck in there.
But that, but that's the way it's always been, and we're not, the fact that they can't get a truck in there based on where we put the line is gonna change.
Say, say you move away, and somebody comes in here that has no consideration of what's going on, and they say, you gotta get into our well, you have the legal right to bring a well truck?
Yes, they can, they don't necessarily need a truck, you can use an upset daisy, and you could, and they can carry it up from the side through their access.
They'll be trespassing.
Basically, you can't get to it any other way?
Unless you?
I'm sorry?
Okay, yeah, if, there are different ways to lift a well up, one is to use a truck, the other is to use a machine called an upset daisy with three wheels. From their side of the property, they could go up their driveway and carry an upset daisy up and lift up a well, and vehicular access is not, wouldn't be required if they did it that way, but if you're saying now is adding a new condition of vehicular access, that has never been a condition before, that's never existed before, and the fact that we're asking to move this other land doesn't change that or make that worse, it's not relevant.
What it does is, it takes, it takes the onus away from you to have to provide them any kind of access, just shifting that property line, it seems, it seems like a small request, just to shift that property line slightly, so you're done, you're done with any?
Shifting into where?
Just so, so the, so that the well is on the property that?
That would be a major burden, because right now, we're required to get a release from our neighbor's lender to, for the property that we're asking to do, that would double the burden, because then we'd also have to get a release from her lender to grant land to them, and it would radically change things, and the bottom line is, it doesn't actually create, moving the lines right now the way we have it, asking for this additional land in the back, in no way creates any more of a burden than ever existed before. Even if we move that little line a little bit, they still, if they carry an upset daisy up the side of the hill, they still have to do that.
I mean, the original, the original property line went right through the well.
Correct.
That, if you shifted the original property line five feet to the east?
And we're increasing the easement as well, to the same amount?
Say that again?
And we're, and we're, and we're going to increase the easement?
No, then you eliminate the easement.
What's that?
You then eliminate the easement.
You're eliminating the easement.
Nobody has said we're eliminating, you weren't increasing it.
No, I would say you, you could eliminate the easement, the intention is to eliminate the easement, so you don't have to worry.
That might be your intention, but it's not the intention of either party, and it's, and it creates additional problems. First of all, again, we'd have to get a release of her, from her lender, which was not contemplated by anybody, which would make this more of a project, and we don't know if her lender would agree to that, and in second, so that would be that, and second of all, it would create an awkward property line where it would jump one way and jump back the other, and there would still never be vehicular access, they would still have to carry the upset daisy up the side of the hill where the easement is if they did that, that doesn't change anything, so moving that benefits nobody, it doesn't change anything.
I guess we have to agree to disagree. On this one, so, the only thing I would, I would suggest is, at a minimum, he mentioned that the health department has softened their opinion on that, we don't have that.
I have the emails, I could hand that out, I'm sorry if I did. They weren't aware of the previous email, of the previous?
Yeah, would the health department be okay with their well being on the other property?
They are okay, because as they acknowledge in the email that they read, that they realized there always was an easement there, and they asked for a copy of it, which she sent to them, and they said, okay, thank you, now we'll just put it in our records, they didn't know that before, I mean, the subdivision map was approved with the well being on her property, that's already approved at the time of the subdivision. Why it was placed, I'm guessing it was a mistake that somebody was, you know, that was being accommodated at the time, but they, every, the board of health approved both properties with that way.
Yeah.
So, so the easement, the, the language reads from Dan Keeler, "Hi, Janine, no, no trouble at all, I received your email, if the easement is to remain for the well on the other parcel, it is best that the easement documents are sent to our office for, for record of this."
But she?
So, it sounds like he is?
So he's, so he's accepting the easement at this point?
That's fine.
He wasn't, he didn't have a copy of the easement, so that's why when he originally wrote the letter, he was confused, so I called him, and he said, "Oh, I didn't even realize there was an easement, that explains it, can you send me a copy of it?" So I spoke to, spoke to him, and he sent the copy of it.
I, I think it's to their benefit to modify the easement, but if that's what they want to do, then?
We are modifying the easement, we're gonna increase the easement, when the deed of the new property is transferred from her neighbor to her, we're gonna add to it, subject to, or reserving, I should say, accepting and reserving an easement, and put the increased dimensions in, so that it matches the map, which we're providing to you today, we are modifying it, that, and technically, the subdivision map itself creates the easement.
Separate documents are technically needed.
But we are going to do that as part of the process.
So that's the one we're looking here? Yep. They want to keep the easement rather than extend the property a little slightly around the well?
Yep. Okay.
So their map that was just submitted is basically the same?
Well, there was an earlier one, that was very, plays a couple weeks ago, there was one, and then me and the other attorney noticed it was a mistake, where the surveyor had us giving them a little bit of property on the other side of things, which was an oversight, so this is a correction from something earlier submitted, I don't know if, when you say the same, if you're comparing it to earlier, what we thought the mistake on, or if you're comparing it to what's currently here.
I don't know if anybody else, there was a one, at least it was just here, actually just got received today, it was the updated, an updated plan, did anybody look at that?
I mean, I could look at something if you want, I don't want to.
They all have it, as well.
Okay.
It's this one right there.
Yeah. All right. Who'd say it's basically, there is no change?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Very minimal change to the, to the survey?
Well, the, I guess that I don't know, I don't want to misspeak, because I don't know what you're comparing it to, there was an earlier one, which had a sliver, another sliver in a separate area where he was making a straight line, which required her to give the neighbor property to make line street, which would have required all the problems of getting releases, and when I noticed that, I had the surveyor correct that, and she submitted a new one to you, so, I'm just not sure what you're saying, is there a change? I don't know if that's the older map that you're comparing it to, I don't have the two in front of me to see, sir.
Do you want to see this copy of the sliver?
No, we just got the, I mean, the map just, we were just giving it to her, I just want to make sure there's no substantial, that there's no substantial change within the two.
Okay, on date of May 16?
Malcolm? Yeah, May 16th was the, is the most current? Okay. Okay, so, all right, so with that, does anybody on the board have any questions?
I just asked, when everybody look at that picture being shown around, they can see topographically, we're actually making it to be what really is what she is mowing and using, based upon the way it falls off past that line, so we're just making it to reflect what's really happening, that's the reason why it's going the way it is. I mean, somebody could still practically take an upset daisy and walk up the hill to pull, for that one time to pull it, but on a regular, weekly basis, she's mowing that area and nobody else is.
Okay. No, I'm good with that. Looking for the road. Yeah, that's the picture of it. There's the two houses, and the well would be right around there.
If you'd like, give that to the secretary of?
Like that, just pretty much square, kind of makes sense, you know?
That you meant, your letter from, from the health department? Okay.
Yeah, so this is looking at?
That's the email, you have a copy of that? Thank you.
Okay. All right, so, Larry, you're, you're good?
Yeah.
Okay. Malcolm, I guess just the, the one thing we didn't discuss, is you had a note for the, the bulk table to be added to the plan? And, and it's just type two action, which is an acknowledgement. Okay.
The, the bulk table, so, depending on what your zoning designation is, there are certain requirements for the front setback, side setback, rear yard, all of those things, they're, they're spelled out in the zoning code, and we ask that, you know, a proposed bulk table be included, because sometimes with lot line adjustments, you know, if you had, if you, if your side lot line was required to be 15 feet from your primary residence, and now you're moving that lot line, now that number's gonna be 12 when it was 15, you know, things like that, it catches?
The surveyor would understand when we request it, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
We should just let the surveyor know what that is, and he'll add it to it, he would, we don't have to give? We don't have to give him any further information, correct? We'll just let him know, please add it, and before they submit the final map for your signature.
Exactly, that's all, it's just, at this point, it's just gonna be a condition.
Thank you.
So it doesn't sound like anything jumps out that there's a problem, it's just?
I don't, yeah, I don't think that there will be a conflict with the required setback requirements, it's just good housekeeping to have it on the plot.
The only other thing, I guess, you know, if, if, you know, if you approve this tonight, which would appreciate is, I guess, we just need to know that, because the surveyor will then draw up the final description, the neighbor has to create a release, which we all agreed would be a condition, her neighbor of the, of the mortgage on that property, we were just waiting, you guys, I'm sorry, you agreed to do that conditionally for us, because we need to know that you agree as to what the final thing is before we can submit it to the, to the neighbor's lender to request the release, so that'll be our next step if we get approval tonight.
So that's what we're getting to, we're getting to this point now, so, I mean, with the best of board, everybody's fine with what we have, obviously.
Yeah.
Okay. With the couple of opened items that are left here, just the housekeeping issues, entertain a motion to have the planner draft a resolution of approval, you know, with the conditions that were originally discussed.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, yes. So before we do that, we have to take one step backwards, technically, according to town code, it's supposed to be a public hearing, being that this is only affecting the two property owners, and it really doesn't affect the rest of the neighborhood, we did have discussion earlier about waiving the public hearing, so if everybody's in agreeance, somebody wants to make a motion to do so?
So move.
Okay.
Second, then.
Motion seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, see none, motion carries. So, with that done, we'll go back to the other resolution to authorize the planner to draft a resolution of approval.
I will make that motion again, Tim.
Okay, motion's made, do we have a second?
A second, then.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? See none, motion carries.
Okay, first of all, thank you, and then just to sum up, the two things we needed to add the bulk table and to get her, the neighbor's lender's release, and provide that to you, and that's what we need to do still, is that correct?
Yeah, right, it was just the?
For, for your note, look for 240 Attachment 3 in the code, or, or refer the surveyor to 240 Attachment 3, that's the bulk table that I'm referring to.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay. All right, with that one done, we'll move on to Shell Lot Line Realignment.
Good evening, members of the board. Frederick Rowling, 2762 Route 52, Hope Well Junction, New York.
Okay. You representing?
The applicants.
All right. All right, that's this one. Okay. So give a little brief description of where we're looking to do this.
My clients are in the process of purchasing 30 East of Road, and toward that end, we need to be able to, in order to meet the town requirements, we were looking to get an easement from the adjoining neighbor, Walter Chminkowski, and we realized that variances were required, we came before the ZBA with that necessary variances, and what we're looking to do is realign the boundaries so that we have 15 feet of field, which will take us over to? Circle, Circle Drive.
Okay.
My apologies, it's been a longer day. It's gonna be a longer day tomorrow.
Okay. All right. What do we have here? Okay, did receive, obviously, the letter from both the engineer and the planner?
We acknowledge receipt. We acknowledge receipt of that letter also.
Okay, all right. So again, I believe, okay, I believe it's just?
We had a?
Couple of questions of staff, I think the board's fine, I think we're all good with, with the proposed, you know, the proposed realignment there to make this access out to Circle Drive, but I do think that we have a couple of things that need to get addressed. I'll let the engineer start, because I know one had to do with just the septic on the front parcel.
We're really just looking for a couple of notes, just for acknowledgement, first of all, there's, there's some driveway design components on the plan, and there's no engineer preparation, so, just a note that the, the proposed driveway design shown here on is for demonstrative purposes only, that a design would actually be submitted for review when they go to get a permit from either the, you know, grading permit or driveway permit, however, that'll be accomplished. So?
So that process?
Yeah, only, yeah, only, the only thing that would be considered for approval tonight is the actual lot line realignment.
Okay.
And then, just a minor, I think Malcolm also mentioned, just there was some acreages that needed to be, just tweaked to correct, and then, generally, the conversation that we had with the planning board before, generally when there's a lot line realignment, and a property gives up property, and that property is served by a subsurface sewage disposal system, there is concern that if that system were to fail, that they have ample areas to construct a new one, and by them giving away property, they're putting some restriction, albeit minor, on themselves, and we're just looking for a note to acknowledge that on the plan, that the, my understanding is that the septic system is in good, is in good shape, they've never had an issue with it, and we're just looking for the owner to, to acknowledge on the plan that, that that's the situation. So, and I, I mentioned to the board, I would have no problem with just addition of those couple of notes being condition of approval.
Okay. All right. So with that, the only other? So with that, the only other thing was, I think, now we just wanted to.
Waive the hearing.
Well, we have to, too, but there was just, yeah, the bulk table, which is on there, just wanted confirmation.
So, the bulk table lists the frontage to be 264 feet. It's my understanding that the frontage is proposed to be on Circle Drive, and it would be 15 feet, and that that number should include an asterisk and reference the variance number that was granted for the frontage. So that, that correction needs to be made to the bulk table. And as, as Larry mentioned, there are some inconsistencies between the acreages that are listed in the bulk table and the acreages that are shown on the plat itself. The lot sizes, existing and proposed, don't match the lot sizes as shown in the plat, and so that will need to be corrected.
So the bulk table should match the plat?
Well, the bulk table is, the bulk table is on the plat, but the lot size in the bulk table doesn't match the lot size on the, on the lot label itself. And the owner name, the owner signature blocks at the bottom of the plat show, I guess, the, the person that you are in contract with to purchase the property. It's my understanding that that should be your name and that you are acting on their behalf, but I defer to the Building Department on how that should be handled, only that the, the owner and the application materials, the owner name in the application materials is your name, and the owner signature on the plat itself is the mess of bugs, and that should be remedied.
So I'm sorry, who's signature do you want on the plat?
I would, I would defer to the Building Department, but I believe it should be yours, and that you have already provided the necessary documentation to, to demonstrate that you are acting on behalf of that owner.
Were you making reference to the owner consent form that's on file with the Building Department?
Yes. And, and as, as Larry mentioned, I would have no problem with those items being conditions of a resolution of approval.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so with that, first item would be is, again, this is a lot line realignment, really not affecting anybody else other than the two properties. Is there a need for a public hearing, or do we wish to waive it?
I'll make a motion to waive the public hearing.
I'll second that.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Next item would be is to authorize the planner to draft a resolution of approval.
I'll move that, second it.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. So, that's it. So just have to do your homework and guess, get the, you know, the plan updated and submit it for, submit it to the staff, and they'll review it and.
Go now for further interaction between us.
So we'll go next meeting, we'll have the resolution in front of us with the conditions, and we'll, we'll go ahead and vote on it.
What's the date for that?
June 3rd.
That's pretty. I think you're working. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Good evening.
Likewise. How you been? Good seeing you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda this evening is Subin LLC Subdivision.
Hi, I'm Eric Rogie with Hudson Land Sign. Just loading up the.
We probably take that old plan.
Yeah. It was like, on the camera, then, you know. Yeah, two applications ago.
Don't forget to put your mic on. You don't want to miss a word. All right. I should have just printed out some plans, that's always easier. I want to run over some changes. I think we were here last, and was it March?
Yeah, so, yeah, it was, it's been a little while since we've been back. In the interim, we've had some things that have come up, and we've had to get another conflict engineer. Is it a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, all right, you had it down as discussions. Yeah, all right. Okay. So if it is, okay, adjourned to May 20th, yes, that's correct. All right. So before we start anything, entertain a motion to open the adjourned public hearing.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so let's go now. So, so basically, yeah, so the last time, I think, we were here, we hit, you know, another conflict. The engineer, so we've, we've retained another engineer, who I believe you should have received his, his comment letter.
Yep, I have the letter.
Okay, all right. So for the most part, I think we're probably going to be concentrating mostly on this letter this evening.
Okay.
I believe, because I think everything else has been addressed prior. All right, so, with that. Let me just confirm, Malcolm, you said you were good with everything at this point?
I believe that our, on my front, our outstanding items are correspondence, the, the EAF issues, right? I know that we have heard back from the Army Corps.
Yes.
That no permit is required. Have we heard anything from the other two agencies, from the DEC or from CHIPO?
We, I, I didn't look at CHIPO, but DEC we have not heard from, but I have not heard from them on any projects that I've asked. We, we went to them for the pied bill degree, that's a bird that I've never heard of, but we did our own research, you know, without the, the DEC's input, and it doesn't look like their habitat would be on the site. They generally want big bodies of water with emergent plants like cattails. We don't have anything like that on the property. So I'm pretty sure the DEC is going to come back and say, yeah, you don't have any lakes on your, your property, so you're, you're fine.
Okay.
And then, other than that, is, is the need for the wetland disturbance permit? And, but I'll let John to that, because he also has addressed that.
That, that permit we did submit a few weeks ago, I don't know if it made it. Okay.
Has not made its way to me.
Okay.
Has not made its way to me either, sir.
Okay. It's there.
Okay. All right. So we'll let John go through his letter.
Okay.
Discuss the open items.
I'm not going to bore everyone, you have a copy of it. Just some highlights. The previous engineer's comments have been satisfactorily resolved or basically incorporated in my memo. We are going to need Duxell County Department of Health approval for the water supply and wastewater disposal system. The planning board needs to be copied on any correspondence to or from them, and any approvals issued by them. As Malcolm indicated, we do need a wetland disturbance permit because we are working in the buffer. You're putting the well and the service line on one lot, and you're working that ditch line through the buffer. So we need that. We need a full and complete permit application, which may include certain items. One of them's a wetland evaluation. I don't know whether that's part of the application, but I would suggest you look at the town code section and make sure that it's all there. You are looking to construct a defined swale to cover, to carry your runoff from Widmer over to the culvert at New Hackensack. I would like to see the size and invert of the culvert at Widmer, and the size and invert of the culvert at New Hackensack. That's not on the plan now, and should be. You do describe the swale, I think it's one foot deep, one foot wide. I'd rather see a cross section because that's graded through there, so sometimes it's easier to convey your intent with a cross section, and I'd like to see that because you are using fabric and other things. So I suspect your banks are a little steep, so that cross section is needed. The other thing is, you've offered a 20-foot easement. The town code is kind of internally inconsistent, but the widest width would be 30 feet, and I would prefer 30 feet, since you're proposing an open swale. Sometimes it's difficult on 20 feet with an open swale right in the middle to try to get equipment and machinery through there. So, and I looked at your overall layout, I think a 30-foot can be accommodated without affecting any of your lot development. Just makes the crossing for the well line a little bigger.
Yes, I think you're right about that. I was thinking we might square up the easement against the far property line, too, and that way it'll be a minimal, just to make it easier.
Whatever works for you, but I think the wider width is, is appropriate. You will need written meets and bounds, and you will need an easement form that's suitable in content to the planning board attorney. There's some specific language in the town code that needs to appear on the subdivision plat. I would like to see that on there. And lastly, during one of the public hearing responses, Mr. Bodendorf indicated that you're going to do some clearing at the culvert discharge at New Hackensack Road. Apparently, that's kind of like plugged up over there.
Yes.
I'd like to have that in the form of a note on your subdivision plan, what you plan to do and what the clearing consists of, so that it's, it's not lost.
Okay.
You do have a site easement. Here again, we'll need written meets and bounds, and again, an instrument that will need to be suitable in form and content to the planning board attorney. On your erosion control plan, you show limits of disturbance for the water service line and the access to the well on lot number two, and it's kind of tight. The practical reality is I couldn't get a truck down there if I had to. And the fact that it's in the buffer, I'd like to see you actually delineate it with orange construction fence. And then the way the well is situated above the wetlands, it looks like you need some silt fence along the back edge. And you put an owner's consent note on the subdivision plan. I believe it should also be replicated on the subdivision plat. And then you had two sheets that were, excuse me, noted to be the same. So, other than that, I think those are my comments, unless you have any real issues with them.
No, they seem reasonable. I think a lot of those fall into like the, the final plat items, so those will be handled in the future anyway.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So with that, let's open up the floor to a public comment. Come on up to the podium, please.